Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular city council meeting for Octo- Monday, October the 16th, 2017, and is in most meetings since we have been here anyway, like it or not, huh? We offer the first 15 minutes if anyone would like to come up and address council. Just like to know who your name is and any particular subject you'd like to talk about. Go on up and talk to us. If you've written, if you've been in for a written time to speak, that will be later on the agenda, and if you're going to talk about anything on the agenda, we'd wait till that occurs. So it's just general things like, "I don't know, where's a good swimming pool in the summertime?" Things like that that we like to hear. Where's a good beach? Okay, is anyone listening out there?
I know.
Okay, good.
I'm listening.
Good. See a show of hands. Good. That's good. I have you part of it. And we're going to talk about budget this evening, right, Tony?
Yes.
Budget?
Yes.
And then we're going to talk about their budget. Again, nobody's listening out there.
Everybody's listening.
Very quiet. That's good. That's good. All right.
Respectful.
Respectful. Thank you, Mr. Weed. Well, hearing and seeing none, why don't we go ahead and call this meeting to order at this time? Okay, then should we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the repertory of justice for all.
Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmember Smith, here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Gil.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Hockes.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Exrem is excused. We have a call.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we have citizens' requests that in writing that gave us, we have one person.
So we have one written request to speak from Steve Andrews, wants to talk to council and update them on the Black Hills Energy.
Evening. Again, my name is Steve Andrews, a retired energy consultant living east of Florence. I spoke with you here on September 18th about Black Hills Energy, your present electricity supplier. Now, things have changed a good bit since the 18th, based on a vote. Here's a quick update on that vote as well as a request. My remarks here again are delivered on behalf of Pueblo's Energy Future, a grassroots network of concerned citizens, elected officials like Pueblo County Commissioner Terry Hart, business owners, service organizations, the faith community, and others. My focus in the group is on electricity costs within the business sector. I'm a pragmatist, not an ideologue. At least, I so describe myself. As you may have read in the papers, on September 25th, Pueblo City Council voted seven to nothing for a resolution declaring their intent to take an early off-ramp allowed by state statute from their 20-year agreement with Black Hills. I note with some interest that they've changed the noun "off-ramp" to a verb. Council may off-ramp Black Hills. Colorado statute allows for early exits from the agreement in years 10 and 15, which in Pueblo's cases, case are years 2020 and 2025. Pueblo have limited time to study their options for switching to a different provision of electricity for customers and then implementing it. City council voted to create a seven- or nine-person off-ramp commission to study their options. Members of that off-ramp commission apparently will be two council members, one Pueblo County Commissioner, one Pueblo West representative, one representative each from the residential, commercial, and industrial sector. There may be two more, including perhaps an at-large representative. They will likely be studying municipalization, creation of an enterprise utility similar to Pueblo Water that could serve more than just Pueblo, opportunities for farming out the system to a set of third parties. This, by the way, shows promise. More on this momentarily. Or encouraging third parties to actually purchase the system. If Pueblo leaves Black Hills, what's in it for you? First, the bad news. As I mentioned a month ago, rates could go up, possibly substantially, if Pueblo is the only city to leave the electric service territory. That's because Pueblo is the plum in the 95,000-meter area, the largest and highest-density segment. Second, the good news. Faced with the loss of Pueblo, Black Hills could decide to sell the entire distribution system with or without the generating plants at the Pueblo Airport to a third party. Under all circumstances that I can foresee, that would lead to at least slightly lower costs for electricity for all customer classes, or, well, depending on how, who takes it over and how they design the rates. That would also lead to more money staying within our communities. Other good news, as I mentioned on September 18th, you can have a voice at the table regarding what comes next. We encourage all 20 other utilities in the service territory, plus county representatives, to get involved in a kickoff dialogue. A full list of those communities with franchise agreements like yours is on the one-page handout which I will give you. The kickoff dialogue, hopefully with those, all 21 communities, will likely be cosponsored by Pueblo City Council members Larry Attencio and Chris Nickel. To reach Larry for more information, I've given his contact information on, and as well as my own. And aside, last week, a large third-party provider of electric services flew into Pueblo to make an, to have an initial meeting with a few of us. They operate in well over a dozen states with gross revenues more than five times larger than Black Hills. They provide energy management services to over 2,500 megawatts. Just to put that in perspective, that's probably 10 times Pueblo's, Pueblo's, a little more than that, their demand in the, in the city. Services of over 2,500 megawatts, the city municipalities, and 10 states west of the Mississippi. They definitely appear to have the experience and financing team to handle Pueblo's needs and the entire Black Hills service territory if it comes to that. I think they could lower rates right off the bat by as much as 15 percent.
Okay, Mr. Andrews, through how much more? You ran out of time, so I'll give you some more time if you can get to the chase.
Okay. That would be fun. Oh, well, then I'll, I'll end with a, a request. Please let us know the exact date when your current franchise agreement with Black Hills is due to expire. This should be public information. I've got a list here of the franchise agreements for all 21 municipalities. It's inaccurate. I know it is. Yours is listed as November 2nd, 2017, which is in three weeks. I'd really like to know what it is. I assume, again, it should be public information. You're nodding as if that's correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. If you're going to be signing an agreement with them, the bottom line would be, you'll lock yourself up for 20 years to wherever that franchise agreement takes you. I would not recommend that. You might at least ask them, can you get a one-year extension, rather than doing a 20-year agreement? Because if you have a 20-year agreement, your off-ramp is 10 years from now. That's the earliest option you have to get out of the agreement. If you were to, well, I just, that's my last point.
Well, it has to be a vote of the people, too, and that'll be a special election in the next spring, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it has to come up. And who are you with? What is this organization you're talking about? Because I'm a little upset with it, but what's the name of the organization?
Pueblo's Energy Future.
Okay, now, I saw on Facebook where you said, that organization said that Canyon City is about to do this. We haven't even talked about it. So if you're doing that, you get it out of there. That's incorrect.
I've heard different-
It has to be a vote, and you know that. Now you know it.
No, no, I don't really know if it's-
Well, now you know it.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I, I certainly don't want to cast incorrect impressions.
But what has started that to try to, I guess, infect the people of Canyon City? We've not talked about it. We're going to.
Okay.
And it will be an election next year. They'll make a decision. I didn't like that.
Okay. Then I'm confused, because if your franchise agreement ends in three weeks, what, what is the, what is the provision going thereafter?
Because they missed the regular election, and it's going to be an election next year.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm sorry. When I was here last, I didn't understand. I had two different versions, and I actually came by a couple of other times.
And I didn't understand why that was publicized like that, because we've not talked about it, and it sounded like it was a, an attempt to inflame the people. I don't like that.
Well, it wasn't an attempt. It certainly wasn't my intention.
Well, then, don't do it again.
Steve, I want to note just one thing. If, if ever you want any public records, there's a records request form to fill out, and those are all open records. So just go online to our, our form to fill out and be glad to-
I will do that. And again, my apologies if you interpreted my intent as one thing when it wasn't intended.
Didn't interpret it. It was written that way.
Pardon?
You better check it out. It was written that way.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go on to approval of the minutes for the October the 2nd regular city council meeting, the October 6th regular city council meeting, and the October 5th general government meeting. Are there any corrections? Mr. Meisner.
Don't look at me like that. Okay. It was my recollection. I sent, I sent a note out. But in that discussion with our county commissioners and their concerns about not being able to finish their budget because Adam didn't give them the numbers, I thought we had a, an agreement that Adam would give them whatever numbers he had available so that they could prepare their budget. And that wasn't mentioned in that particular paragraph.
I had spoke to Mr. Meisner email, and we will add some language at the city engineers to provide the project estimates that he has available to the county in order and a timely manner for them to get their budget done.
Is that correct, Adam? I mean, it was just whatever you had, you were going to give them.
They had it. They had it. They already had it.
Right.
They just want super detailed information on the budget for a project that's in their jurisdiction.
Right. Got it.
Any other, Mr. Weed?
Yeah, I, I just have a question. I was, I wasn't at the meeting, the special meeting for the UREC Center, but in reading the minutes, it said the estimated usage is about three patrons per day with an average visit of 50 minutes. Is that accurate? Or was that, should that be three patrons per hour, or?
That was during the evening. That was three patrons during the evening hours between the hours.
No. It's, I, the estimated usage is 35 patrons a day with an average of, with an average visit of 50 minutes. And if I might also add, there's another correction, Kathy.
So instead of three, it was 35?
Thirty-five. And the sentence before that, the applicant hopes to have 500 members, with 250 members within the first two years, not the first two weeks.
Okay.
That'd be quick.
The pressure's on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Nice catch.
It wasn't even there.
Put the pressure on, right. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing none, I'd ask for motion to second. Mr. Weed?
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, I'd make the motion to approve the minutes of the October 2nd, 2017, regular city council meeting, the amended minutes of the October 6th, 2017, special city council meeting, and the October 5th general government committee meeting.
As amended.
As amended.
Oh, as am- I put in, as amended. I put that in there once already.
Okay, as amended. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Schumacher? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Gil.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
A unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Are there any council members at this time that have any announcements?
Oh, I'd like to congratulate the Humane Society on their national award.
I, I-
It brings a lot of honor to our community.
I asked them to come back to the first regular city council meeting in November. I think we'd, I'd like to do that and do that presentation for them. That's, that's quite an honor. Congratulations.
Considering where it was four years ago?
Oh, yeah, obviously. Doug's done, done a great job, so appreciate that.
And if you go down there, don't park on the street, because it'll knock the mirror off your pickup. I promise.
I don't have your mirror.
No, the mirror was there still.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah. Just hang in.
Any other, do we have a meeting Wednesday?
You do. Sir?
I won't be in town. I'll be absent. We have a vision committee meeting at 4:00 on, the mayor pro tem's going to take that over, right?
Which is, very importantly, a listening session.
Yes, or-
I hadn't heard that I'm taking it over, but I would be happy to do that, even though it conflicts with the, the high school state region, or the regional band comp, marching band competition is Wednesday as well, so.
Would you, Mr. Meisner, want to take that over and alleviate you of that? Is it okay?
No, no, no. It's, yeah, I'll stay.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm planning on going to the state competition. I'm sure they'll make it, but.
Okay.
I did want to wish the high school well in the marching competition, the regionals. They did compete at the, just, they competed Saturday at the Harrison Invitational, and they took first place in their division, Division III, and of all the divisions, 1 through 5, they came in 5th, so.
Wow, impressive.
Did a good job.
Yeah, so it's a nice win, Ben. Any other announcements?
Terry, when's the next planning commission? I don't, my phone's in the truck with my calendar. I apologize.
October, sorry, October 25th, and we've changed the time to 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Except my phone's in the truck and my calendar's gone.
With your broken, with your broken mirror.
Every time I get out of the truck, I see the mirror and forget things, so.
Okay, well, all right. Adoption of the agenda and consent agenda, Tony, would you review that, please?
Mayor and council, 5A would authorize temporary street closure on the 500, 600 block of Main Street on October 28th from 10:30 AM until 3:30 PM for the Chambers Halloween event. 5B is a resolution 30-217. It's a partnership with the Dawson Ranch Homewinter Association, wishes to name the previously constructed trails in Dawson Ranch. I know Mike Gramowski is here. I don't know if he wanted to say anything to that effect?
Yes, Mike, come on up. Thank you.
As Tony mentioned, my name is Mike Gramowski. I was asked by the HOA to take on the leadership of a, an improvement project on the trails up in Dawson Ranch, so I'm here acting as a chair subcommittee, if you will, of the HOA. I have good news to share with everybody. There are about three miles of hiking trails, a little over that, in Dawson Ranch that were constructed between 1999 and 2004. About 50% of those trails are in good shape, and about 50% of them are in bad shape. Some of them are unsafe and impassable. They were not designed for sustainability when they were initially built. They're in disrepair. After four meetings with city officials, including Adam, and Tony, and Ashley, now we've actually reached a good partnership with the city to work on improving these trails. The city's going to provide a small amount of funding, equipment, and operators of that equipment, so that residents can do the manual labor to improve the trails. We've got 15 people in the area signed up to be volunteers in less than five days. So there's a high amount of interest to get on board and get after those trails. By the way, I don't have your, your, your vote yet, Tony.
Mike, I'll be, I'll be, there were some kids.
You've never seen Tony with a shovel.
I tender.
I did. 2A. I slimmed with a shovel.
But he just held it.
Yeah.
He didn't know how to use it.
It blistered me. He had already had blisters.
Thank you, Mike. Anything else?
Some more things. The goal of this effort, the goal of this project is to improve the trails so that they are sustainable, safe, and they're aesthetically pleasing to all of the residents in the area, not just Dawson Ranch. So all of the people in the HOA and a good share of the neighbors are viewing this project as a, as a citywide project or an area-wide project, not just the Dawson Ranch project. And I think that's a very important distinction. Understand that there, that's not always been the case. Our first trail work Saturday will be on November 18th, so we better hurry, Tony. And we're on schedule with all the preparations to actually commence on November 18th. Very much appreciate the leadership of Tony, Ashley, Adam, to help make this partnership go. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them.
Any questions, Mike? Mr. Meisner?
It's not really directed, you us directed our, Mr. Shovel Man. I assume those figures that you, that we've committed to them is in the 18 budget?
Yes, yes, yeah. It might be even less, because I was talking to Rex with Steve, our super trail builder. We might be able to do that work for even less, and it's already a very reasonable budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to extend a thank you to Mike and his hard, he's put a lot of hard work and research into this project, and it's always nice when the city can partner with active groups in the community for success for everybody. So thank you, Mike.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
We should get Mike on the stormwater ditch issue after this.
Yeah. There you go. We should send that out.
Or get even with you for that, Tony.
Continue on there.
Resolution, 5C is resolution 312017. That's to establish wireless facility application fees. We're proposing for, for new applications, $600 for a substantial change, $400 for micro cell, $100. And these fees will arrive as simple by taking kind of the midpoint of other related cities that we looked at. So if you'd like to change them, certainly that's your prerogative.
Thank you. Do we talk about that now?
Sure. Mr. Meisner, go ahead.
Well, I, I think if you remove the high end of Durango, that substantially would change the fee structure, and I realize, I mean, what really skews those figures, if you want to call it skewing, is the fact that Durango's at 1,800, so the 1,600 relative to the 1,800 makes sense, but the, but the 600 relative to the 500, and 350, and 350, and 150, I don't know that that makes sense. I would suggest that those fees for a new were less. I had requested, I thought maybe that was based upon some man-hours, but apparently that's not. It was just a matter of adjusting, picking out that fee, but it would be nice to see if some of our fees were based upon what we believe to be the amount of resources that were allocated to that particular license or whatever we're doing.
Terry, go ahead.
It was, if I might, this is Terry, city planner. I was working with Deena on this particular project. We were looking at these other jurisdictions, and we were also comparing them to our fees right now, and we considered that our review fees, especially comparing that to our site plan fee of $350, was very low, so we wanted to get that more, this particular one, we haven't assigned a fee to an application in a while, and to get that in a, have that be reasonable. That was our suggestion. Of course, if you wish to make that lower, by all means.
Well, I guess I'd lose some logic in the conversation when the reference for the fee isn't based upon potential expenses of the city, it's based upon other people's fees, and we're not other people. I would feel much more comfortable if somebody were to come back and say, "Our cost for generating one of these licenses was $500," and I'd say, "Okay, it makes sense." But when we establish a fee based upon what everybody else is doing, personally makes no sense to me.
Any questions of council? Terry?
Councilman Meisner, are you saying that you would like to see a little bit more data justifying the rate hikes? Or would you just want to go ahead and maybe do an adjustment that you feel would be a little more reasonable?
Well, I mean, if I make an adjustment in the fee, it's probably going to be based upon the same amount of reasonable logic this one is. Yours was based upon other fees. Mine would be just based upon the fact that it's my belief that that fee's too high, so.
How many of this do we do a year? Towers and stuff? What?
Not a lot.
Two, three, 10?
I suggest you cut them in half.
We've actually, this is the first time that we actually have regulations that require an application. In the past, we haven't reviewed any applications at all, so.
To give, to give everybody some room for growth, I, I would at least lay out there a new fee of 400, a substantial change of 200, and a micro cell of 100.
It's a pleasure, council.
I can support that.
I'll support it.
Does there a definition of substantial?
I'm sure the, I'm sure it's like the other one that we've got, that somewhere there's-
It's in the regulations. I did not bring those.
It's like the other one.
When we did that tower here just recently, that's the first one I ever remember doing, so, but I can support these fees. And I agree with Jim, and basing them on, like, actual costs, it would probably be a fairly solid way to do this.
Do we know what the basic cost rule is?
Well, no, there, we would have to do an analysis of that, and I'm happy to take this back and do that and bring it forward again.
I think I'd prefer to get an analysis done, so we know that we're doing this correctly and based on data.
We can do that.
As we move forward with all the fees, it would be nice to know how many man-hours it takes us to, to approve or to process a fee, and then we could adjust it accordingly. And if it's 400 or 1,200, I can support those if it's based upon realistic costs that the city's incurring.
How do you do that if you've never processed one?
Well, you could still estimate what, what is involved in the whole process. I mean, I, let's just say it takes six hours. What would, what's our cost? What's our administrative cost for six hours of time of three employees? I would think that figure somewhere is available in the city. If not, we ought to know it.
Right.
And I'm sure Harry knows it.
And these wireless facility sites are typically not very complicated, so, look at the last, the one we did. That was pretty straightforward. Bunch of junk on a pole, a box at the bottom.
Okay. Okay. Let's move away from this. Let's go ahead. Do you want, is that the pleasure of council? Ask our planner to do that time study, and, or do you want to set the 400, 200, 100, and then see what it actually costs the first time we get one in?
Well, what's your, what would be your recommendation, Terry? Because it's your costs that are at stake here.
Well, there's, besides the planner's time, there's also the city engineer and the building department, so I'm happy to take that back and let's, let's do an analysis, and we'll bring it back for you.
I mean, if it comes back at 800, I can support that, if it's based upon this is what it's going to take.
Okay, sure.
Is that what we want to do?
Okay. Works for me.
So directed, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
He's still got to go.
5D would be to approve a revised deputy chief job description, new requirement being the necessity to have a bachelor's degree, and I know there may be some discussions about that.
Well, I had, I was a little confused when I, in fact, I may jump right in here.
Go ahead.
It says, this is the, written by Chief Harvey, "The second significant recommendation is that the length of the experience required in the current commander description is only one year of experience in supervision at Canyon City PD. This negates a large pool of candidates who cannot apply for this position, but may be the most suited to meet the agency's needs. The commander job description should be charged, changed to require a minimum of three years of law enforcement supervision at the rank of sergeant and above, regardless of where that has been attained." At one point, we say the parameters are too high, and then we go to three years.
No, the distinction was the, the one year had to be within the Canyon City Police Department. So, that would disqualify anyone from outside the agency, whoever applied. So, he wants to open up the floodgates of applicants and not make an error.
You back to stormwater, aren't you?
Yeah.
Is that, is that, I'm sure that's what it's, okay.
But I know in talking to some of the council members, there was an issue about the education requirement, and I think that's fair discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I think we're trying to reach up to a big city standard, and we are still a small town. I think if we put a bachelor's degree, well, especially in the commander position. Assistant chief, I don't see where there'd be a big problem with that, but commander position would invite people to stay and actually achieve a career goal. These guys work, you know, and I know there's officers out there that have gone and done, you know, extended education and such. But, like I said, I don't think that they should be necessary for the commander position. The assistant chief, yes, because it's one of the requirements for a chief's position. And what we do with the deputy chief is we, we groom them to take over as chief should somebody decide to leave. In the commander position, it's something that I think that all, everybody on patrol would desire to reach, knowing that they have a career path and they could make a decent living and represent their city. So, like I said, I would not, I don't feel for the commander position that the bachelor's degree is prudent. For the deputy chief, I do believe it is, because he, we're grooming him for the chief's position. And if he's deputy chief, he might not have the time in his world to go out and pursue this higher education, my opinion.
Ms. Harkes?
Well, my feeling on this is this, I don't even like the bachelor's degree as a requirement, okay? And I'm looking at it this way, if we leave the bachelor's degree as a requirement, it's going to affect some of the things that Mr. Gill's mentioned and all that. But what it's also going to do, if none of our police officers who've been here for years have been able to obtain that, it means we're always going to have to go out of town, out of state, to bring somebody in. And, and personally, I don't like that idea, whether it's local government, big-time government, stuff like that. I always think that what we do within a municipality or in the state is try to recruit from within. All the other requirements that are mentioned, I don't have a problem with that. That doesn't exclude when we have an opening in those positions for somebody with that bachelor's degree to apply. But it could shut out everybody within the police department that we currently have, you know? Now, maybe it'll give them an incentive to try to get to it. But I think by having it there as, you have to have it, it basically is a negative response, as far as I'm concerned. And like I say, it sets it to the point where we're always going to have to go out of the area to act, publicize for a new chief of police or whatever the case may be. But all the other stuff that's in there, I like the rest of that, except for that.
Mr. Weed?
Yeah. I like, personally, I like the requirement. I think it sets a high standard for our department. I think it, it says that we want to, I mean, over, over the last, I don't know what, five or six years, the Canyon City Police Department has made amazing strides towards becoming accredited and not, not just become a good police department, but become a model department, and I think we're, we've come a long ways towards that goal. And, I mean, I don't, I couldn't find it in the commander position, but in the deputy chief position, under experience, education, experience, the, the final line in there is any equivalent combination of education and experience may be accepted. So, there is some flexibility in there, but I, I mean, personally, I, I think it, it sets a standard and it says, you know, part of your goals, if you, if it's your desire to move up through the ranks and become a commander or a deputy chief or whatever, is this is something you have to do, and it shows initiative and it shows that you're committed to this kind, this career path. I, I think it's a fair requirement. Now, that's, so, I'm in favor of the bachelor's degree thing. It's in the, I'm just curious about this, in the deputy chief thing and under the physical requirements, you really have to be able to lift a hundred and seventy-five pounds?
Yeah, that's actually part, sorry, mayor and members of the council, Derek Harvey, chief of police Canyon City. So, what that hundred and seventy-five pounds is, and actually, the only thing that we test is a hundred and fifty, and that's the base physical requirement to be able, if you had to drag a person, you show up at a traffic crash, the car is on fire, and you need to drag that person out, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five pounds is about the average.
Okay, and is that across, I'm curious, is that across the board, all the way down through patrol?
It is. So, the entry-level position now, in order to become a police officer, you have to drag, dummy, a hundred and fifty pounds, a hundred feet.
Got it.
Is that the same as lifting?
Dragging, slight easier to drag than lift, but.
Ms. Smith?
Dennis is correct, in both job descriptions, there is the language, an equivalent combination of education, experience would be accepted. We have a number of officers, the chief can testify, that either are pursuing degrees or some have actually completed degrees, so this would serve as an incentive, but it doesn't disqualify them if they don't have the degree, because we also can look at their experience as a substitute for that, so it does give us that flexibility. It's not a hard and fast requirement in that respect.
Ms. Smith?
My question is for Chief Harvey, how many of our police officers and commanders have a bachelor's degree currently, do you know?
So, currently, we have several folks that are just shy. We do have two officers with us that actually have graduate or master's degrees currently. And we have several folks that have ninety-plus hours, so basically, within a year's stretch of being able to finish a degree. A lot of those folks have, even though they have the credits, haven't gone back to actually finish the degree. But we do have several folks that have a large amount of credits and just haven't gone back to actually get the piece of paper.
So, I guess one of my thoughts is, is in requiring a bachelor's degree, you have those, you know, who are so close to it. Those who can be finishers, that's a huge thing to say that you rise above the rest and that you can have this goal and finish it and have the, the education to be a better officer or a better commander or a better deputy chief. And so many of our kids are graduating from high school with associate's degrees already, it's almost, almost, everybody has to have a bachelor's. Are there opportunities that help our officers gain the education if they want to complete their bachelor's, to support them in doing so?
We used to have tuition assistance, and I believe there is still some money available for that, but I can't speak to that, I would defer to.
If it's specifically job-related, for example, if they were going to get a degree in criminal justice, we would cover that. If they're going to get a degree, for example, in anthropology, we wouldn't.
Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor, council. Chief Harvey, two comments. Where in your chain of command, from the top down, does a commander sit?
So, a commander is by hierarchy, just underneath the deputy chief of police. There are times in either my absence or the deputy chief's absence that a commander would have to fill the shoes of acting chief if either one of us are not there. So, they are considered senior management or command level.
Okay, and then I would, the other thing is, is I would just encourage that we, that we maintain or, or enhance whatever programs we have that, that offer incentives to improve that education level for our existing staff. I could support that.
If you were to pass this, we would probably amend the budget to include additional resources to attract people to do this stuff.
How many commanders do we have currently?
Currently, we have two authorized positions.
Two authorized? And what is the, what is the requirements for most communities like ours for these positions?
So, that's a good question. It really depends kind of on the chief, so to speak. But the standard across Colorado and really nationally is that senior management is stapled out of bachelor's or higher. Monavista currently is trying to attract a sergeant, which would be the position just below this, and they are requiring an associate's degree or higher. Golden, obviously, which is not our same demographic, but Golden is the only other one who's advertising a command-level position, and that's a captain, and that's a bachelor's or higher. The postings that I've seen in the past across Colorado, and I haven't seen a whole lot in southern Colorado for command-level positions, but generally, they are bachelor's degrees.
As I understand it, then, we have a bachelor's degree in there or equivalent, and it's your call. If they do not have the bachelor's degree, then it is your call.
No, but if you look at the job description.
I know, but I don't, I don't read it that, I don't read it that way in his letter. Now, if he could amend his letter to eliminate that and add the other clause, bachelor or other experience, that's a different story. But in your initial letter, you're saying you're, we want to require it. There's why I have a problem, okay? Now, like I say, if you take it out of this letter, that part, to add it with the other part, where you have a bachelor's or related educations and stuff like that can be considered, I can live with that, okay? And, and the reason why I can live with that is because it takes advantage of everything else we're talking about. But to say that you want it is where, and you know, I have a problem with that.
The council's being asked to adopt the actual description, and in both descriptions, the language states, any equivalent combination of education and experience may be accepted, so that's what we would be dictated by.
Okay, that's what I thought I had saw, that it would be any equivalent in there. That's what it says in the actual description. This letter is not the description, this is what we would live by back here.
My experience has been, is that when you're going to allow experience to replace education degrees, you stipulate what that formula is. In other words, that you're going to require a bachelor's degree or you would have six years of experience in replace, in lieu of a bachelor's degree. I, I think as it reads, it's confusing. If we're going to allow experience to replace a bachelor's degree, we should stipulate what that experience is so that when I apply for that position, I know what I'm looking at. That I've got six years of experience, and I, and I don't need a bachelor's, but.
We indicate how many years of experience you need at the minimum. What this would cover would be, for example, if someone had gone to the FBI Academy or to the Northwest Institute or had significant military experience and had lots of educational and training opportunities in the military, those things would be factored in, and that's the judgment the chief has to weigh when he's selecting officers. But I'd hate to try to narrow it down to a matrix or a couple of sentences, because every situation is different. People come to us with very different backgrounds.
Mr. Gill?
My concern is that we have an officer that comes in, out of the academy, works as a patrolman, gets promoted, gets promoted, gets promoted. He's put his life and his whole world in Canyon City with the dreams of moving up in command. And then, he's been here ten years, flawless record. He knows our community, he knows the people, he's done a good job, he's been promoted to sergeant, that he would not have the opportunity to become a commander because of lack of education. And certain things like, you know, they spend ten hours a day on the street, they have kids. And I know there's law enforcement people out there that have done this and still gotten their bachelor's degree. But there are people that are good policemen, people that are good in any job, either retail, managerial or whatever, that do not possess a degree, but they have the experience to go in and do the job and do the job well. And I don't want to see personally that individual excluded from a possible promotion. That's my concern.
We agree with you, and that's why this language would not disqualify someone that you just described. If they have an exemplary record and they have the type of experience you're looking for, there's not a necessity to have a degree. Is it an asset? Absolutely, certainly gives another candidate maybe an advantage, but you've got to look at the whole individual, not just elements of them.
And in reality, to be competitive, most folks are going back and getting their bachelor's degree. The modern law enforcement officer is going back and getting education. I did it myself, I didn't have a degree when I first started in law enforcement. And staying up late after the kids went to bed and early after, before I had to go to sleep for shift the next morning, I worked and got my bachelor's degree, because honestly, most of the organizations that I was looking at that wanted senior management folks required a bachelor's degree. And I think it sends a message, there are things that you learn in the academy, there's things that you learn on the job. There are different things that you learn in a college at a degree level. And so, what I'm really trying to do is to let people know, I value your experience, I value what you're doing here. Loyalty means a lot to me, but I also want you to keep pushing yourself. And, you know, there's, there's things out there that a degree will teach you that most departments maybe don't have.
And to, and to tag on to that, it's, it's a test for the, well, we have two commanders and a, how many assistant deputies, what?
So, only one deputy chief and two commanders.
So, there's three positions where you really have set a test or a bar of where you really want to see where the true leaders, the true go-getters, the true people who can really manage their time and, and be successful under that type of pressure can do it. And they, it gives, it sets them apart. And in addition to that, getting a degree has never been easier than before. I mean, you have online schools, that's how I finished my degree, was online, and, and the financial assistance and the ability to do it. It's actually quite incredible how easy it is to get an education these days to help you be really set apart.
Okay. Well, I think we should move on, are we comfortable with? Mr.?
Five F is this.
Thank you very much.
Is fifty-five dash seventeen, award of the Field Avenue Sidewalk Project to Avalanche Excavating from Canyon City and Mountain House to exceed two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars, sixteen cents. And it's, I think, important to note that this particular local contractor beat out Kiowit, who has saved us millions of dollars and is very sharp with their pencil, so kudos to them. It demonstrates that the little guy can compete against Goliath and prevail, and we have a case here. So, these would be important sidewalk additions, we had three bids, so we're excited about this award.
Good, very good. And then the list of bills. Avalanche was doing our alleys, right?
Excuse me?
Avalanche was doing our alleys?
Yeah.
Yes.
They've been hungry.
Right, okay. And do we need, need a motion, or any additions or corrections? Mr. Meisner?
Well, to make it simple, I'm just going to request that item E be removed from the adoption, because I can just do that individually, we don't have to vote on it.
Five E or five C?
Five E.
E, yes.
Which is the wireless thing, I'm going to, I'm going to request that that be removed.
That's C. That's C.
Oh, mine looks like an E, because it's got a little extra line on it.
Okay, let me put my glasses on.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to request that five C be removed from the consent, consent agenda.
We'll bring that back to you.
Okay, bring it back, all right.
Are we making discussion now? Because I have, I have an item I would like to discuss. Or do we want a motion second and then discuss?
Let's do a motion second, then we'll have a discussion.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion from council? Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve the, we adopt the agenda and the consent agenda with the removal of item C.
Second.
Now, any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to, on five A, the temporary street closures for the Chamber of Commerce trunk and tree, there was some confusion over a couple of events that we've had downtown over street closing and the people that signed the permission slips that actually knew the dates. We also have Fifth, Sixth and Seventh Streets closed, which causes a bit of a ruckus if you have a business on Fifth, Sixth or Seventh, but none of them have been asked to sign these. I would just like to make a note to, I guess, to myself and to whoever, or Kathy to whom, that we start getting the numbered streets signatures too. I know that it's a.
You can make that as a proven five A contingent upon Denise's going back out and finishing up those petitions.
Okay.
Or having them finish up those petitions.
All right. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, does that require a change of motion or anything like that? No?
Next time.
Yeah, I'd say next time.
Next time.
Yeah.
Late date, I don't think there's time for that.
Works for me. Don't want people getting spooked. Okay, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
I would, but I still disagree with the bachelor's degree.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Tony, could we have your report, if any?
Got nothing to report right now.
I wish to thank. I wish to thank you for that. However, let's move on, number seven, ordinance number thirty-five, this is series two thousand and seventeen, this is the second reading. It's annexing property into the city limits, so would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number thirty-five, series of two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of certain unincorporated lands commonly known as Great Western Storage LLC annexation to the City of Canyon City, Colorado.
Could I have a motion second?
Mr. Mayor?
Smith?
I move that we adopt ordinance number thirty-five, series of two thousand and seventeen, upon second reading. upon second reading.
Second. Second, Mr. Hockes. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Yes.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, number eight is ordinance number thirty-six, series two thousand sixteen, this is a second reading as well. It's zoning properly, zoning property recently annexed. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number thirty-six, series of two thousand seventeen, and ordinance zoning certain real property recently annexed into the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Great Western Storage LLC Annexation.
Could I have a motion a second? Mr. Gill?
I make a motion at ordinance number thirty-six, series two thousand seventeen, be approved on second reading.
Second.
Second, Mr. Schumacher? Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Number nine, ordinance number thirty-seven, series two thousand sixteen, this is a second reading. It's an ordinance directing the certification of certain assets. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number thirty-seven, series of two thousand seventeen, and ordinance directing the certification of certain assessments against specific real property within the City of Canyon City.
Okay, could I have a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number thirty-seven, series of two thousand seventeen, on second reading.
Second, second, Mr. Hockes. Any discussion on that motion? Now, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, number ten is a public hearing for two thousand, two thousand eighteen proposed budget. I'm hereby opening the public hearing, because we have a report from the city administrator.
Just mayor, council, brought over to the public. We'll go into a lot more detail about the budget when it's in ordinance form, the last meeting and amendment, the first meeting in December. But this proposed two thousand eighteen budget of balanced, prudent, and meets the city's strategic plan goals, it is at thirty-two point seven million, which is-
Excuse me, a eighteen point five percent decrease over last year. The major reason for the reduction is that last year that you had three major expenses, first being the two-way road projects, you kind of, what I would call surged those projects. You spent eight million dollars, when traditionally we only generate three and a half million in revenue, because you borrowed against other city funds to expedite about eight to nine miles of road improvements this year versus probably what will be two to three on a normal year. Also, we surged our capital improvements in Centennial Park. The first phase of the master plan included splash pad, new restrooms, new playground equipment, and we're doing some of the preliminary work for the proposed pavilion in two eighteen, so that won't be duplicated to that degree. And then finally, with withdrawal about the fire district and the sand district, it's reduced our self-insurance fund by one point two million dollars. So those are the three major areas we will not experience this year. The general fund overall is proposed at thirteen million, that's a nine point nine percent decrease. Again, largely because of the two-way project reduction. Capital is budgeted at nine point six, that's a thirty-seven percent decrease, again related to the reduction to two-way surge in the Centennial Parks predominantly. Enterprise funds, that would constitute our water and stormwater, that's budgeted at five point four million, that's a fourteen percent decline. Again, the biggest drop-off is we won't be doing as much waterline work, which was related to the two-way road projects next year as we did this year. And then the self-insurance fund, as it mentions, it programmed at two point two million, that's over a million dollar reduction because of the withdrawal of both the fire and the sand district from that fund. The budget itself, we think, is reflective and supports both the citizen survey and the council strategic planning priorities, which are public safety, economic development, road and infrastructure, community and recreational investments, those will continue. The core services of the city and the general government fund are police and public works, they constitute almost fifty percent of our spending, so we clearly are focused on the most essential services of the city. Our capital infrastructure, the total budget, including general fund enterprise, is at eleven million. We will be using one point two million from excess general fund operating reserves, and a little over six hundred thousand from excess operating reserves from the water fund to accomplish those capital improvements. Believe overall, we're living within the resources we have, one of which is, we're really constrained from a revenue standpoint. Our eighty-two percent of the general fund is paid for through sales tax, that's an exceedingly high number. Our, our, our property taxes, I believe the lowest in the state, I know we're proud of that, but as a result, we're very, very dependent on a volatile tax, the sales tax. So hopefully we'll diversify our economy to overcome that in the long term. We also are still maintaining, despite significant investments in capital last year and this year, a very healthy operating reserve. Overall, it's at six point eight million, or thirty-six point five percent. Your goal, based upon your financial management policies, is between the range of twenty to thirty percent, so you're in excess of that. On the general fund side, your reserves are at three million, or twenty-seven percent, so kind of right in the middle of, of where you want to be. Probably the most difficult part of this budget, we won't discuss tonight, because you're going to have a workshop on Wednesday, and probably another workshop to deal with the issue of water and stormwater utility rates. The necessity to make capital improvements in both those funds, in particular stormwater, is significant, and it's going to have to require significant review of the current rate structure, because neither, the water fund or the stormwater fund, is generating the funds necessary to meet our long-term capital needs, in particular the stormwater fund. Not only is not even meeting our capital needs, it's not even meeting your operating and maintenance needs. It's in a deficit position at this year end, and is projected to be in a deficit next year without significant review of your rates. So that'll probably be the most challenging element of this budget, we'll be looking at that rate structure for water and wastewater. Also, we'll probably make some amendments to this proposed budget, because we know one of the major projects is about a two million dollar improvement to US fifty for pedestrian safety, the idea of the mini medians. Looks like, based upon Adam's feedback, that will be postponed until two thousand nineteen, so there's no reason to reflect that and give people a false signal that that's going to be built in the next year. Looks like it won't be, so we'll revise the budget accordingly. Besides, you know, revenue growth, again, personal costs are our single largest expense area, they represent fifty-seven percent of the general fund. Keeping a lid on that, because we're only proposing one new FTE, and that's to replace Terry in her senior planning position, holding the line everywhere else. And I think we're continuing to make prudent decisions in replacing our aging infrastructure, whether it's roads, or water lines, or parks, or recreational assets. I think the council's done a really good concerted job in replacing those old assets. And then, we no longer can rely much on state or federal grants, they're shrinking by the day. I know the president's budget, whether it's for the EPA or for FEMA, that's proposed to shrink substantially, so we're becoming less and less reliant upon outside sources of funding. We pretty much have to be more self-reliant. On the general fund, this represents the core of our critical service that the public sees every day, whether it's police, streets, you know, public works, parks, and rec. We're focused on some of these key improvements. Two-way road improvements, we've scheduled three point five million, coupled with the surge last year, which required us to issue some debt, we'll have budgeted three point nine million next year for two-way. And we should be able to accomplish close to three miles of road. And I think we're beginning to talk about where those roads would be located. We've mentioned a few, like Forge Road and Twelfth, so we'll talk further about that. Resurfacing, I think you're seeing the benefits of this year's chip and seal work, we did over five center lane miles. Next year, we'll budget four hundred thousand, and we will spend every cent of that. We'll also budget four hundred thousand to pave roads that currently are dirt, and with C-Mac money. We'll also, again, we're taking out the two million for the US fifty improvements. The other major investments, phase two of, of Centennial Park is for the pavilion, improve road circulation, and enhance parking. We're doing some of that preliminary work right now, so we can expedite these improvements in the spring, but that's scheduled for three and fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements. And we want to recognize the Rotary Club, for they're proposing to donate fifty thousand dollars for that pavilion, so we really appreciate that. The river beautification project, which we had hoped to accomplish, the in-river and river bank improvements this year, unfortunately, the permits weren't achieved in time, so that's all scheduled for two thousand nineteen. We hope that with our funds, we can leverage a GOCO grant of roughly three hundred fifty thousand, because the total work required from first to fourth, in-river improvements and bank, is seven hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we have a large chunk of that, but we're hoping to get the balance from the state in that grant. As far as public safety, the big changes there would be replacement of four SUVs that either have excessive mileage or wear and tear. I know Frank had brought this up. The officers do prefer the SUV, because most of our offices are fairly large, and with all the equipment they have to carry, from their bulletproof vests, the equipment on their ways, to now our new mobile data terminals, there's not a lot of space in those vehicles, particularly the sedan. We're spending about three thousand dollars on average more for the SUV than the sedan, but because of our take-home policy, the average life of one of our vehicles now has gone from three years to six years, so it's roughly five hundred dollars more a year, or roughly ten dollars a week to make our office. That's their office, that's their mobile office, I think is a worthy investment. Also, additional funding for the SWAT training and equipment. Personnel, I mentioned just one additional staff, we're recommending Terry's position. Also recommending a cross-the-board pay-for-performance plan that would average two percent. So the range is zero to four, but the average is two percent for our employees. That's about what inflation is right now, so it would cover inflation. And then, our bigger issue is, we did the salary survey this year, comparing ourselves with other like communities, whether it's Salida, Alamosa, Fremont County, and we found there were about seventy positions in the city that were paid below the minimum of all these other jurisdictions, so we're proposing to at least get those positions, of which fifty percent are police officers, up to the minimum, the floor. Not the ceiling, but simply the floor, so we can be more competitive in both recruitment, and equally importantly, in retaining good people. We now, as we've mentioned, we have a really good cadre of young officers, we want to keep them. We don't want to be a breeding ground for other agencies, whether it be Fountain or Colorado Springs. We want to keep our officers, so this will help in a significant way. And then finally, on economic development, the other major area, we've got three hundred thousand, we've mentioned before, for tourism marketing. That's reflects, hopefully, the, the measure will pass on November seventh, that will generate three hundred thousand. It's to recognize that we learned from the Colorado tourism and studies, that roughly only about twenty-nine percent of the course tourist spending is at hotels, so the balance, the majority is at retail establishments, restaurants, and gas stations. So we thought it was only equitable that the council would contribute a matching amount that would come from the sales tax, which we generated from gas stations, retailers, and restaurants, so that's their fair share contribution to lift our efforts to attract more tourism to the community. Because right now, again, our overall revenue growth is seven tenths of one percent. That's not good. So we would like to see more spending locally, but we know we compete against the Colorado Springs and the Publos of the world on big-ticket items, it's hard to compete with them, when you're competing against a Costco. But we can certainly attract more visitors to spend money at our hotels, at our restaurants, at our gas stations, and our retailers. So we think that's where, long-term, we'll see more growth for not only tourism, but more importantly, for our coffers, to offset the tax burden for this community by having locals pay, not the full weight, but visitors pay more of our service costs. So that, in a nutshell, is the proposed two thousand eighteen budget. We'll provide you a lot more details during the two hearings we'll have at the end of November and beginning of December.
Any questions? Mr. Meisner? I can count on you.
First of all, just briefly, give a synopsis of the process that would make council comfortable that each of those department heads were instrumental in each of their budgets.
Well, we solicited their feedback early in the process, they, Harry and his staff reviewed it. There was about a three million dollar differential between this proposed budget and what they requested, which is not abnormal, so we have to go through the painstaking process of making sure that everything is being requested. Doesn't meet my personal needs, or Harry's, but meets the councils and communities, because we look at, what did the citizen survey priorities tell us? What are our strategic priorities? What's the business plan? And that's what drives that process and getting to a balanced, prudent, but at the same time, responsive budget to the needs that you've expressed.
I did, Mr. Meisner and Tony, and they both, I asked for and received the, their submittals, department head's submittals. And you can have a copy of it, and what actually is the budget proposed, and if you didn't get them, it looks to me, I have, went through it a few times, it seems equitable to me, and I didn't see any.
Yeah, I have that information too, but as part of the public hearing process, I thought it was prudent that that information be communicated.
Oh, okay, I understand, thank you. Actually, there's a few places where you've actually added money. Just saying. Okay, thank you. It looks very fair to me. The other question I had was, are we going to continue, which I hope we do, downtown alley improvements in two thousand eighteen, because we have a hundred and fifty thousand in there, is that-
I'm glad you brought it up. Yeah, we, we spiked it to, to a hundred and fifty, so we want to continue that progress that we're making.
We appreciate it. If only we could get to use it behind my building. I guess when it dries, right? Get my hands in it. Okay, thank you, good.
On that, on that particular subject, it would be nice, Adam, I'm going to throw this in your lap, I, I think generally, the public is really confused about why we're spending money on alleys. We got hammered on that Saturday in terms of trying to explain that that's a, that that's a main street-
Service delivery.
Right. Well, people look at that project, and they're saying, why are you spending money on alleys when in reality, what we're doing is, is part of that whole Main Street project, and providing those service deliveries? So I don't know how we publicly, publicly communicate that appropriately.
Sure, I think you stated correctly. The, the intent was to keep a promise that we made when we did the Main Street improvements, knowing that a lot of those deliveries would be forced to the alley, and that were usually done on Main Street. And part of the reason that we heard that they weren't made in the alleys was because of the condition of the alleys, and they were pretty bad, and we, there was a number of them that we got complaints, a lot about safety because of the ice buildup and things like that.
I think it was very well explained and reasonable, it just the, it was unreasonable in the non-acceptance of the reasonable explanation. I mean, just saying, I, that's exactly what it was said, and that wasn't accepted, so.
I think the council recognized, and so did we, that's an essential element to the infrastructure of businesses. If you can't deliver goods to them-
We're in trouble.
We're in trouble. And you can't ignore that it's not a sexy investment, but it's absolutely necessary.
And it shouldn't happen on Main Street.
What?
Deliveries shouldn't happen.
The delivery shouldn't be delivered off of Main Street, I think is where he was going.
And again, I think, I think we explained that very well, the explanation was not accepted. I think we can say that. Am I in trouble?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Ashley? Ms. Smith?
Oh, I had, I do have a few questions. And one thing I wanted to clarify for the public too, is that, Tony, when you talk about the two-way surge reduction, you know, an overall reduction in the budget overall, is because in two thousand seventeen, we had the inter-fund loan. And so now, from now on, moving forward, we don't have the inter-fund loan, we're just operating off-
Pay as you go.
... what we collect in sales tax, which is about, well, actually, it's just under three point five million dollars this last year. So that's where we're moving forward, with that on the more just standard budget, anticipated budget.
Correct.
Looking, when we were doing our budget for two thousand seventeen last year, you had talked about how, in the past, department heads would kind of give city a wish list you had talked about how in the past, department heads would kind of give city a wish list of things they wished they could get done in the new year, and we'd see what had happened. And you changed that philosophy to you tell me exactly what you're going to accomplish in 2017, and I want to report back on what does get done. And I was curious where the progress is as far as budgeting and being realistic in what can be done.
Well, the two most significant capital investments, we had $15 million of capital investment issued, but the two most significant would have been the two-way projects. And I think we'll get another report in December. You had a report earlier this fall, but they're on schedule, they're on budget in excess of $8 million worth of work. So that's a positive. And then the Centennial Park was the other major area. You've built a splash pad, you've built new bathrooms, you're getting the playground equipment in literally this week. And you, we're actually ahead of schedule because we're creating some of the infrastructure for Phase Two. So I think that's indicative of the progress we're making. We also, we haven't been consistent in the past as far as chip and seal spending every nickel we had per year. We did that this year, and I think the results speak for themselves. So the staff's been really good about staying on top of ensuring that if we budgeted it, you spend it. The only major project that probably didn't get accomplished was the in-river improvements because of permitting issues. But that'll be scheduled for next year.
Well, and I did notice too, that we have moved the budget for the US-50 gateway signage and wayfinding to 2019. And I was wondering why that was, because I thought we were on schedule with that.
Well, you're, we.
It's 2019, $200,000. We had scheduled that to be spent in 2017.
Yeah, I think we're still waiting. You're about to hopefully hire the consultant to complete the designs you gave as kind of a preliminary design. We did go out for an RFP on that. A group has been selected working out the contract. I hope we can get it to you soon. And then they will complete the job of final design and fabrication of the wayfinding, not just the signs, but also the two monument signs.
Well, they're doing the design. I was under the impression, because I was on that committee that chose that, that we'll have to probably rebid out for the actual fabrication.
Yeah, you will bid that out, yeah. But they'll, the design will trigger who hopefully will be interested in that.
Well, right now, that $200,000 is under 2019. I was just curious about that.
You mean 18?
No.
No, that's a mistake then.
It's on page 109.
Yeah, yeah. Because that project should go out to bid, assuming that you hire someone in the next 30 days. We hope that we can go out for bid on the fabrication of both the signs and monuments signed by early spring. There should be no reason not to be able to do that.
Okay. And I see, Adam, maybe, I have a few questions that maybe you have the answers for. On page 10.
It's going to change the budget by $200,000.
Yeah, so that's going to change the budget by $200,000. On ditch crossings, on page 109, under street projects, for $100,000, what are you, what project are you anticipating on doing with?
So we don't have one currently picked right now. We typically budget about 100,000 each year. Usually that project is done right at end of year, beginning of year. So usually, we combine two years, two years budgeted money. So we have 100,000 this year, we've got 100,000 next year. So we try to do a project right there at the time where the ditches are shut off. Right now, the only thing we have committed verbally is help with the Dozier project.
And that's subject to county's collaboration. So my next question is if county does not wish to collaborate on a project where we're willing to pay a significant amount of the project on their jurisdiction and their land, what, do we have an alternative?
Yeah, then we would move, we have a long list of ditch crossings that are in poor shape, so we'd move to the next one that's critical.
Okay, and we also have, under your thing, Main Street downtown improvements, starting in 2019 through 2022. I was curious, looking ahead, what are you looking at for downtown improvements with that?
So there is still the intent to complete the improvements that we started down there. That's not a finished product down there. So we're thinking, you know, at least, you know, 300 block is critical right now, the 700 block is critical. We're going to make some improvements next summer from the 12th to 14th block by the middle school. So it's essentially finishing out that project for the entire length of Main Street.
Would that be subject to council's approval?
Absolutely. All the capital projects, yeah.
I'm sorry, I still have a couple more questions.
Well, I'm going to just throw this in. That 200,000 she's talking about, if you shift that to a column, I think it's going to change the budget. If it's a true admission, the 200,000.
You're talking about the wayfinding, yeah.
It's in the 19 column, if you move it to the 18 column, something else has got to change.
We'll correct that.
Yeah, because part of that, I saw an email today from Dean on that. Part of that is that was budgeted this year, and it wasn't spent this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so technically, it's 2017's budget.
Yeah, the money is there, it's just.
It just hasn't been spent yet.
Load it over.
It's going to be spent in 2018, probably.
I'm still hoping that maybe we can get something done this year, but we'll see. The consulting process is taking longer than I wished.
Under the stormwater utility fund, there's $400,000 proposed for 2018. I talked to Harry, he mentioned that was Rhodes Avenue in East Main. Is that that section on East Main where there's been repaved and everywhere except for right at the intersection where the Humane Society is?
No, we were asked to identify a large project that we thought would fit that budget number. Likelihood is we might be able to do a portion or all of the project there at Rhodes Avenue in East Main that causes flooding there near the Humane Society.
Okay. So does that affect where there hasn't been any paving done on East Main? Is that part of that, or is that completely?
No, it affects where there's been paving, yeah.
And then I see in 2019, it looks like a whole full of $12 million spent on stormwater based on.
Sure, so, I mean, yeah, so where you look at the five-year capital, I guess that's back to where we're thinking about wish list stuff. And we're going to talk more about that as we move forward with the stormwater utility rates. But $12 million is the number we've gotten on the most recent priority project that we have for stormwater in the Northeast Canyon Basin. So that's why that number's in there.
And Tony, maybe you can help me with this. I had mentioned at our last task force meeting that I really wanted to see some money budgeted and set aside that when there's a big storm, that we can have city crews out there to help alleviate the flooding because we need to take responsibility for that.
True.
And Harry's explicitly telling me that there's, our stormwater fund is in negative $200-plus thousand. We can't do it. Can't there somewhere in our general budget have crews set aside for that? Doesn't have to come from Stormwater Utility Enterprise, it can come from something else.
State statutes as far as governing how much of the general fund can subsidize an enterprise fund, in this case, the stormwater, we're far in excess of that. We'll go into that in more detail on Wednesday.
I know, I understand that, but I want to be creative and say, can the street fund have some crews out there on storm nights?
We could do that, it's just a source of funding them. The source is going to have to come from a revised stormwater fee. There's no way getting around that. You currently don't have sufficient funds to even cover what's budgeted for operations and maintenance for the stormwater. And on top of that, we'd like to try to help out other jurisdictions, like some of the irrigation ditches, which we don't disagree with, but the funding has to be identified. It cannot come from the general fund anymore.
But can we just say that this is a street project? Because the water's coming down the street.
No, we have to be honest about it. This is a stormwater project, especially if we're cleaning out drainage ditches. That's not related to streets, that's related to stormwater. So again, you're going to have a very comprehensive but challenging discussion on this on Wednesday. And it's probably going to take two meetings to get your arms around just how much, not only do you have the problem of insufficient resources to maintain what the city is responsible for, but other parties we affect. On top of that, you've got no money to invest in the real solution, which is capital improvements. And otherwise, this becomes just an annual problem, flooding, 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 because we're not building the infrastructure to prevent the flooding. We know it's expensive, it's not just the city's responsibility. 82% of the drainage that comes into the city is in the unincorporated area of the county. So clearly, they have to be a party to solve the stormwater and flooding issues. We're part of the solution, we're not the entire solution.
All right, I only have one more thing, and it's totally unrelated to the stormwater issue. And that is, looking ahead, actually to 2020, on page 110, to replace the restrooms at Red Park. And it has come to our attention that oftentimes during lunchtime at high school and after school, that there's some co-ed gatherings inside of the restrooms there. And so I'm a little concerned that maybe we need to keep our eye on that situation as we're looking for if there's possible vandalism or bad things happening in those restrooms. That as we look forward to that in 2020, that we make sure that's addressed and that those restrooms that we're investing in are being used properly.
True. Nothing that a good surveillance camera won't take care of.
That'd probably get us in more trouble. We do have.
Can I make a comment on her comment?
Mr. Meisner, go right ahead.
Well, I'm with Ms. Smith from a standpoint that we had committed in that meeting, this council, that we would try to help with that stormwater issue. And if the solution is, is to take that $100,000 that we budgeted for whatever project, we don't even know that's there, and take a portion of that 100,000 and allocate it to removal of that trash on those stormwater gates, then that would be a solution.
You have that prerogative?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gill.
From what I understand, we have four or five storm-related flooding events each year. And we've had the conversation, and I feel that we need to find a way to put these people out there to help them protect citizens' property from flooding when they are understaffed and they're out there running around all night long trying to get this done. It's our obligation, and we need to find a way, period, in the conversation, my opinion.
We agree. And you'll have the opportunity to achieve that end results after your meeting on October 18th.
Well, those end results will be for 2019 or beyond. I'm talking about 2018.
No, these rates would be effective in 2018. That would generate hopefully the resources to address the problems you raised.
I'm talking about the budget that we're looking at today, where we have $100,000 addressed to projects that we don't even know what they are. And I'm suggesting that we take a portion of that $100,000 and allocate it to removing trash from storms. 20,000, 40,000.
It's only going to be probably $10,000 to $15,000 each year.
That's the will of the council, we can do that.
Adam, I think you want to address this?
Well, you're going to, you have to find a contractor that can be on-call, and that's okay. We can start getting prices for that to do that. We have a contractor already that does our stormwater facility maintenance. But if you want, we can get pricing on that. The idea of using the existing city crews, unless you increase the size of the crew, those crews are busy during the same storm cleaning grates across the city. So it's not a matter of just giving them extra money so that they can clean the grates faster. I don't, I'm not sure, I guess, what you're proposing as far as what the cost would be applied to other than us hiring someone to do it.
My question, my statement is a fact that everybody's saying we can't do the stormwater removal in the ditches, the trash, because there's no money in the stormwater budget. And I'm suggesting that there is money. We have 100,000 that's allocated to some projects. Take a portion of that money, 50,000, 20,000, whatever it is, and allocate it to stormwater trash removal. And if we have to contract with somebody to do that, so be it.
We can do that.
Okay.
I feel strongly that we need to make that effort to do that. I think every single time a storm hits, our citizens and our ditch companies are cursing us up and down and all around. And if we can at least stop some cursing, that would really help us move forward in having a better relationship with the storms and our citizens as we move forward in trying to address the stormwater issue overall.
That would give Manny one last thing to complain about.
We can do that. I mean, there's money there.
Well, when we look at this and we talk about this, we're not going to do this for Manny, okay? We're doing it for the citizens of Canyon City. I don't want, I don't want everybody to think we're doing it for Manny, because we're not doing it for Manny. We're doing it for the citizens of Canyon City, the overall there. I know it affects the ditches and everything, but this isn't for Manny. It's for the residents of Canyon City to have better water flow.
Which we get many, many phone calls about.
Protection of their property and possibly a life.
And they're put at danger.
We can address.
We're devolving here. So you will go ahead, Adam and Tony will come up with a contractual relationship of some type and give us a number. Is that what the pleasure of the council is? Does that make it clear enough?
That comes out of 100,000.
Wherever it comes out of, we need to know where that, what that is, and if anyone will do it. Fair enough?
Yeah, that'll work.
Can we move on? No.
No more on that.
Do you have some more comments, Mr. Meisner?
On the budget?
Go ahead.
You had mentioned the 1.5 million that was coming from reserves for the 11.5 million in capital. But that's not, any of that, the fund's not coming out of property acquisition, is it?
No.
I mean, I've still shown that at 1.685.
Unassigned operating reserves.
Mr. Meisner?
One more quick question. I don't know that you can answer this tonight, but under council of expenses on page 38, there's an expense of workers' compensation and life and health insurance. Is that a prorated thing, or what's the deal?
Page 38.
38.
Yeah, the employer has to participate in that, just like it's taking off your money. And they're also betting we'll die before we end up on an office.
You have workman's comp coverage for your, and then you also have your life insurance.
Yeah. Apparently, we don't consider you a big risk, because it's only $34 a year.
For the entire year.
So it must be like a paper cut.
I feel better now.
That we got to cover you for.
All right.
It's because Tony's seen me go up and down the stairs. That's what we have it.
Okay, we're slipping.
I just figured it was a lawsuit.
Any other question?
Any other questions, Mr. Meisner?
I appreciate everybody taking their time and effort to put this thing together.
Yeah.
Appreciate your questions, and you'll have a lot more after Wednesday, I guarantee you that.
Is anybody in the audience like to come and talk to us about the budget? Is anybody from the audience, audience comments about the budget that we talked about here? Yes, ma'am, you'll have to come to the microphone. I would like to have your name and your address.
I just have a question. My name is Dolly Gonzalez. Oh, I thought I had to take my hat off. And my address is 215 Harrison Avenue. My question is, back to the stormwater, could it be possible that the trash is maintained? The trash could be removed on a maintained basis, maybe once a month, or maybe not on an on-call basis?
Well, it is maintained regularly, but when there's a big storm that comes in, it just washes in trash from other places and clogs at the grates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Anybody else in the audience like to come, office? Where am I?
Somewhere.
Audience would like to comment. Okay, thank you. Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And thank you for all your comments and everything. Number 11, we're going, I think we closed.
Oh, we closed already? I just thought, if you wanted any comments for me to request answered for your little section.
I think we're going to cover that probably Wednesday. Okay, thank you. So let's go number 11. We will, we go to executive session, and I ask for a motion and a second on that for legal advice, which we have, we'll have to do in executive session. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor, council. I move that council go before an executive session to hold a conference with the city attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B.
Second.
Second. Ms. Schumacher? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Wade?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you all. We're done.